Yep.
Okay, we will resume the Dublin City Council meeting of Monday, November the 15th, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a special guest this evening, a wonderful group of young people here that are going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all would like to come forward. The flag is located here behind me. And if you would lead us in the pledge, that would be wonderful. Well, thank you, folks. We appreciate that. And so Troop 111 and your troop leaders are here this evening, and I think they have a few words to brag on you all about for a minute.
Yeah, we'd like to really thank City Council, certainly Dana McDaniel and the city manager for welcoming us to this meeting. These boys represent a portion of Troop 111. These guys are dedicated to their own development. They're working on citizenship of the community so they can better learn about being good citizens. The Eagle projects they've worked on are contributing to a number of schools and parks throughout the city. And we're really, as leaders, we're really blessed to have such wonderful young men and being dedicated for their development. So thank you for having us.
Well, thank you for being here. I know my son is helping one of the Eagle Scouts in training right now, building some birdhouses and things for the community. So we'll look forward to what your creative Eagle Scout projects will be and really thank you ahead of time for how that they will serve this community in wonderful ways. So thank you for coming tonight, and we are so pleased to have you. Okay, with that, we have a proclamation. And if Melinda would meet me here, if, I'm sorry, Michelle Rendo would meet me here in front? Okay, well, November 27th coming up here is our Small Business Saturday celebration. So here with Trading Places, wonderful location over there, over at Dublin Village Center, huh? So I have a proclamation that you'll receive on behalf of the small businesses of the Dublin community. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas November 27th is recognized as Small Business Saturday, and the city of Dublin celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States, they represent 99.7 of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas there are more than 965,000 small businesses in Ohio that employ 2.2 million individuals, comprising 45.3% of the workforce, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have changed the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas the city of Dublin offers unique and vibrant consumer and dining experiences, presenting a wide variety of options to find the perfect meal or gift, while supporting our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media, or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Chris Amrose-Grooms, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage Dublin residents to show support for our community and communities across the country to patronize small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed this 15th day of November, 2021. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure.
Well, thank you very much. This is a very exciting opportunity. My business is Trading Places, and we are located in the Dublin Village Shopping Center. We've been in Dublin for five years. We opened in 2009 and spent about seven years in PAL and then moved here to Dublin. And it's been a game changer with all of the growth of the Bridge Park community. So it's been really great. Small Business Saturday is really important because supporting a small business is not just supporting a large corporation, obviously. We're employing children. We're supporting events for kids' schools. And most importantly, we are there to serve our community. Owning a small business is not a get-rich-quick scheme. It's really about serving your community, and that's really what the, living through the challenges of the pandemic and pivoting and shifting and trying to solve problems is all about. So we're really excited about the 27th because we feel that people are out shopping, and we would love to have all of the businesses in Dublin supported. I know we're doing a Chamber Pass, or something with the Chamber, a holiday passport. So come out and support all of our small businesses.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you do. I've been in your store over there, bought my son a little golf ball holder. It has all these different places you can hold your golf balls. So thank you for what you and all the small businesses do in our community. It's really a treasure. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
This brings us to the citizen comment portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone present that would like to speak relative to an item not on this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We have no items on the consent agenda this evening, which will take us to second reading, public hearing ordinances, Ordinance 73-21.
Establishing the location and amount of cash on hand for change funds.
Great. And our staff report will be from Mr. Stifler. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, council. There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 74-21.
Amending Chapter 35 of the codified ordinances to revise the schedule of fees and service charges for the city of Dublin services.
Thank you. And our staff report will be from Ms. Murray. Megan, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. No changes have been made to Ordinance 74-21 since the last reading.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ordinance 75-21.
Authorizing the rescinding of the merchandising fund and transferring the fund balance to the general fund.
Welcome, Mr. Stifler. You'll start your marathon here.
I am indeed, but there are no changes to this ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Ke, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ordinance 76-21.
Amending Chapter 51 and 52 establishing user fees and capacity charges for the sanitary sewer and water systems.
And I'll stick with you, Matt.
Thank you. There are no changes since the first reading of this ordinance, but I did want to follow up because there was some conversation about the fees at the first hearing. So I wanted to provide some additional information to council on the revenues and expenditures of the fund relative to the fee conversation that we were having. So we'll start with the sewer fund. There was a question about what's driving the fee increases, and this, this table kind of demonstrates that very clearly. Now, none of the numbers on this table, the CIP, the capital expenditures, or the debt expenditures, include any of the sewer extension projects because those are wholly funded through transfers. So the sewer fund is not impacted positively or negatively by those activities. So they're not shown here. And what you can really see is that operating expenditures are increasing over the five years programmed in the CIP from about 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars. So it's not operating expenditures that are driving this fee increase. It's really the debt expenditures. You can see there that in 2022, our sewer debt-related expenditures will be just over $700,000. And by the end of this five-year CIP, the debt service payment annually would be $1.6 million. And that is driven primarily by the Avery and Glick Road relief sewers. Just following up on that. So there are no impacts, again, on the sewer fund from the sewer extensions. And I just want to be clear on that so that if any residents are watching that, that's not what's driving these. There is no current timeline to achieve 25% of system value, and that is really a result of, we program a five-year CIP. There is a timeline in my model, which models out to 2045. But because it doesn't have capital projects programmed 10, 15 years from now, I don't think it's a realistic assessment of what the fund balance will be. There are some things that have impacted sewer rates, and I think they're worthy of discussion and consideration. So the first that impact rates in a positive way was the completion of this Upper Scioto-West Branch Sewer Connector. That was a $19.7 million project that the city initiated in 1998 and was making $1.5 million debt payments on from 1998 to 2018. So when that came off the books in 2018, there was a window where we weren't making those debt payments, where the sewer fund was able to generate some revenue and see some relief. And that corresponds with the period of time where we didn't change sewer, sewer rates. There are those projects that I listed there, the Deer Run Sewers, and the Biennial Sewer Linings Project, which began in 2010. And I put an estimate on there. We have it programmed for three of the five years in this CIP. It's probably going to continue for another cycle after that. So I put 2030 as a potential ending date. It could be sooner than that. It could be later. But those are the, the types of projects that are impacting this fund and really causing the, the increase in fees. Water is a, is a slightly different story. The interesting thing about the water fund is when you look at the operating revenues, you'll see that they're relatively stable at $1.2 million per year. But the fund balance is $12 million a year. That is a very high fund balance to annual revenue. It takes a lot of revenue to generate a fund balance like that. It'd take 10 years of no expenditures to get to that fund balance, which is why we have this 3% annual increase. It's a large, maybe percentage-wise increase, but it doesn't raise a lot of revenue because it's starting from a very small base, which the sewer generates $3 million and has about a $7 million fund balance. So it takes about two and a half years to generate that kind of fund balance. So things move very slowly in the water fund, which is why we need to kind of ramp this up over time. We are matching up the capital expenditures and the debt expenditures of water fund in the next five years very well. So we're not retreating. We're not going backwards. I think we'll be able to proceed forward. The projections are that this fund balance is relatively stable over this five-year period. And again, there's no timeline to achieve the 25% of system value because we don't have capital projects planned much beyond the five-year CIP window. There's no impact of the extensions on the water rates. That's completely independent. And they're limited by a couple of, of factors. One is limited revenue generation compared to fund balance, limited cash-funded CI projects in the next five years. Those are positive to the fund. We are utilizing debt to fund new capital projects, which is another positive to the fund balance over time. And we are projecting a stable fund balance, which is why we have it at 3%. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Want to take a moment for public comment? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
Matt, thank you very much for that. You know, as I look at this, and with that information that you gave us, that there isn't a plan to arrive at 25% of system value for either of these two over time. It makes me think that perhaps as we're, we're looking at our policies, which I know the Finance Committee is going to do on some of this, that we might ask ourselves, what would be a good measure then? Because if, if we don't see that as a, a measure for us to arrive, maybe it's time for us to, to stand back and look at it and say, what, what would be a good approach? What's your thought about that, Matt?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. I think it's, it's probably not a good idea to have a policy that you have no even intention or plan to hit long-term. I don't know what that would be at this point. I know it's, it's hard to find a fund balance policy for an enterprise fund, particularly on the capital side, which is, I think, how we've kind of arrived at this situation. But I think that's absolutely something we should explore in the next year or two and kind of identify the direction that we want to head.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, or counsel?
Matt, does this contemplate, I know, you know, for our earliest developments in Muirfield, I know we've had extensive expense in replacing those duckdaw, duckdaw iron water lines there. Are we coming close to having replaced most of those, or are there going to be those large expenditures on this fund for some time in the future?
My understanding is that once we get through the major sewer linings in that area, there will be some recurring maintenance, but it will be less than the 1.5 million every other year that we're currently programming. So we should see that decline after we get past that.
Yeah, no, there was sewer, sewer lining, and then there was some water line replacement that they weren't able to mediate in other ways. So hopefully that, that doesn't, that we're approaching the end of those projects that are necessary so we won't compromise the percentage of that fund further. So, okay, anything else? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 77-21.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcels, and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Toll's Career and Technical Center.
Thanks, and we'll stick with you, Matt.
Thank you, council members. There are no changes from the first hearing on, on this ordinance.
Very good. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 78-21.
Declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcels, and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and Toll's Career and Technical Center.
Thanks, and we'll stick with you, Matt.
Once again, no changes since the first hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ordinance 79-21.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Nurx, Inc., or one of its affiliated companies to induce it or such affiliated company to lease a facility to create an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the December 6, 2021 council meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John, Christina, and Andy. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose-Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 80-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for certain property owned by Shepherd Land Holding Company in Franklin County and Madison County, Ohio, authorizing the execution of related agreements and documents, and appropriating funds therefore.
Thank you. We'll stick with you, Matt.
I wanted to provide a little bit more information on the financing discussion regarding this land acquisition that we started last week. So just to recap, there are two options to purchase this fund. One would be utilizing the general fund balance to provide cash for 100% of the acquisition cost. The other would be to advance funding from the general fund in order to, to purchase a bond anticipation note for the purchase price. In order to evaluate these two options, I just wanted to provide you with the most recent financial information. So looking at our income taxes, we've revised that budget up twice to $96 million. Based on 11.06% year-to-date growth continuing through the end of the year, we would have an income tax projection of $102.4 million. Now, I have thought that that 11% would fall since July, when I told it to you the first time, and we're still here. So I'm not making predictions anymore. That's just where the projections are taking us. Our year-to-date collections total $89.9 million, as you can see there, which is almost $9 million more than a year-to-date through last Friday, 2020. There will be some, there is some, some movement in these that's worth discussing. You'll see the October monthly financial report will be in your packet tomorrow. So I just wanted to address this a little bit now, while we have this opportunity. So the month of October was an extremely successful month, with income tax revenues being almost 33% above October 2020. That's been followed up by a fairly low November, at least through the 10th of November, we were down 12%. So I asked our tax office to look into that, kind of explain the discrepancy. They provided me with the analysis below, which is an October 1st through November 12th comparison that shows an increase over that time period of 13%. So what they're showing is that October and November have been on, basically on budget on actuals with the remainder of the year, January through August. But that there's essentially been a timing issue. There was 20% too much deposited in October, and there's 20% too little deposited in November. And that's just how the month's going to be this year when you compare them month over month. And that really is a result of the three paycheck months moving through the year, and us just getting a payment that came in November last year in October this year. Created a great October, and it's going to create an underwhelming November. But as you can see, overall, income taxes are on track with how they have been all year. There is no November slowdown, as I had initially feared when I was reviewing these numbers. Looking at our general fund policy, this, this table demonstrates kind of the general fund policy under four different scenarios. The first scenario is the scenario that was presented during the operating budget, where I said that at the end of this year, we're projecting a budget, a fund balance of 67.2%. Now, percentages can be a little bit difficult to understand how that kind of, what does that mean, Matt? Well, it means that we'd have $14.7 million more than our general fund policy would require. If we were not to make this purchase, if we were to just proceed as we had similar conditions as what to when we discussed the, the operating budget, that projection would be updated to just under 70%. And I would think we would have close to $17 million at the end of the, of the calendar year. So those would be the updated budget numbers, apples to apples, comparing it to the operating budget. If we were to utilize short-term financing, those numbers would obviously fall to those shown on the table. And if we were to issue cash to purchase this from the general fund, the numbers fall to 60.4% and $9.5 million. The cash option in 2022, since I think it's important to talk about both years, since that's the most conservative option, leaves us with a fund estimate of 54.6% or just under $4 million in excess of the policy requirements. And as the mayor pointed out and is correct during the operating budget discussion, this is a very conservative estimate. It, it assumes that we expend 100% of our expenditures. We typically spend between 85 and 90%. Just for reference, during the 2021 operating budget discussions, at the end of this calendar year, we were projecting a 55.8% or $5.1 million surplus. And here we are at either 15 or 17. So there is likely significant upward pressure on that 2022 number. All of this is to say that staff would make a recommendation that because the 2021 fund balance is estimated to almost be 70%, notwithstanding this purchase, at this level of fund balance, staff would recommend cash funding the land acquisition, and that it does not reduce the fund balance near or below the level specified in the general fund policy, which is 50%. This purchase has resulted to estimate in a fund balance of 60.4% or $9.4 million in excess of the policy requirements. And we're comfortable that this does not place an undue burden on operations in order to comply with our policy goals. I think this is part of the conversation we were starting to kind of get to yesterday but didn't fully vet, that this kind of activity has policy implications, that we need to talk about this in reference to what fund balance do, are we required to have, 50%? What fund balance does our general policy say is essentially an area where we want to transfer from the operating to the capital, which is 75%? But it's kind of silent on that 50 to 75%. And this is the area where the short-term financing would operate in. So at a, at a level close to 70%, we should probably utilize cash. As we get closer to 60%, it probably gets more of a question in a gray area, in a comfort level. As it gets closer to 50 and below 50, it's clear that we have to utilize short-term financing. We haven't really had that discussion, but this is kind of the start of what that might look like.
Great. Thank you for that update, Matt. Want to take a moment for public comment? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? A hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
Thanks, Matt. I really appreciate the analysis that you did in the recommendation and why you're making the recommendation for cash, cash financing versus the short-term debt. And I, I definitely think that's something that we might want to think about for the coming year for Finance Committee, is having that discussion about that, that, that space between that 50% and that 75%. So I very much appreciate that. I look forward to the conversation. Kathy?
So Matt, I had a couple of questions. So our current, if I remember from your last presentation, the short-term borrowing cost is like a, at about the 1% level, right?
That's what it was estimated to be, yeah. I hesitate to say that in this inflationary environment. I haven't looked. It could be more, but that was what it was a month ago when we, when we did the analysis.
So the question that I ask myself, as I know, last time I looked, and you could give us an update on that, is our cash investments, et cetera, are earning a greater rate than that 1%, right? T-bills are at 1.7. What is our current portfolio of cash earning?
I think the, the meter portion of the portfolio is under 1%, and the Manning and Napier is about 1.8%.
So net-net about 1.4. So to me, one of the policy So net-net about 1.4. So to me, one of the policy questions, what makes it interesting, this is a timing question, I think, right? So we're between this period where this 15-70%, where the cost of borrowing is lower than our cost of return, which is an unusual situation, if I understand it correctly. So in that scenario, it seems to me, it just makes sense to short-term borrow this and then pay it off if, in fact, we're going to earn more, leaving it in our investments than we are going to borrow at short-term. Now, I know there's a cost of borrowing, so that's the only, the only question that I'm asking myself is that we are in this very interesting time. What is your thought about that, Matt?
I hesitate to make a guess as to whether we could earn on an interest basis. I think we would earn on an asset, would appreciate more than 1%, so we would probably do well there. But I think we'd probably have to strongly consider issuing these bonds taxable, which would raise the interest rate, because we're utilizing them for economic development.
But I wasn't necessarily suggesting we would do long-term financing. I was suggesting we'd borrow short-term.
Sure, no, I'm sorry. I think I misspoke there.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was the question I was asking, is, that's the short-term question that raises, is raised in my mind.
We certainly could go in that direction. I think there might be opportunities. What I would, what I don't want to do personally is I don't want to recommend short-term financing. End of next year comes, there's 15 to 20 million in fund balance, and I recommended that you hold a note that you had to pay 1% or 2% on for $6 million when you could have paid cash, and you're asking, why did we even use this tool, Matt? This wasn't the right time. And I would hate to then have the tool be negatively looked upon for future financings when maybe it is a more appropriate time. So as long as we kind of understand that the math supports cash financing, you know, I think it is, I think it's a valid option, which is why I brought it up to discuss here.
The meter is the majority of the portfolios, so it's 0.6, and it's probably 80% of the portfolio, so only 20% is earning the 1.8. So the blended rate is probably less than 1%.
Yeah, the last time I looked at the portfolio, it was like 1.2 or 1 something. So thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
It's a great question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So the vote on the ordinance would be to accept staff's recommendation and cash fund this acquisition, just to be clear, so everyone knows exactly what they're casting their vote for. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thanks, Matt. Ordinance 81-21.
Adopting Chapter 140 under Title 13 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances to Prohibit Discrimination of Certain Protected Classes.
Thank you. And Ms. Rader will be our staff report this evening. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good evening. The version of Ordinance 81-21 before you for the second reading includes the amendments proposed by Equality Ohio in the document provided to council and is further refined by council at the last meeting. The Law Department reviewed the language and agrees that the amendments are reasonable and in keeping with the vast majority of similar ordinances passed by local jurisdictions. Otherwise, there have been no revisions to the ordinance, and we recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council comments, discussion? Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Very good. Ordinance 82-21.
Rezoning approximately 42.5 acres from our rural district to PUD Planned Unit Development District, Highland Glen for development of 102 single-family lots with 12.4 acres of open space and associate site improvements on the east side of Highland Croy Road, north of the intersection with Post Road, under the provisions of Zoning Code Section 153.050.
Thank you. I will make a motion to postpone this to the December 6, 2021 council meeting. Is there a second? Thank you, Christina. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo? Mr. Peterson? Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 83-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement with Paragon Building Group Limited and Union County for the Highland Glen Development.
Thank you. I would also like to make a motion to postpone this to the December 6, 2021 council meeting. Is there a second? Thank you. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Introduction First Reading Public Hearing Ordinances. Ordinance 84-21.
Adjusting ward boundaries of the City of Dublin as required by Article 9.04 of the Revised Charter.
Thank you. And our staff report this evening will be from Mr. Rogers. Welcome, Homer.
Good evening, council. During the council workshop held on November 1st, staff presented options for the realignment of ward boundaries in accordance with Article 9.04 of the Revised Charter for the city. In addition to the charter's criteria of having the wards substantially equal in population, council also asked that staff review the potential for uniting neighborhoods that were split by ward boundaries and also adjust boundaries to reduce carve-outs. The next slide predicts the current ward, or depicts the current ward boundaries and the current and projected population percentages. As you can see, Ward 2 and 4 are the most significantly unequal wards and boundaries. Also, there are significant carve-outs, most predominantly along Brand Road. And the next slide depicts the direction council gave staff on November 1st after options were presented. Areas A through I on this map were all reviewed with council and supported with just one adjustment. The area that is labeled B on this map did include the Hawks Nest neighborhood, but it was decided to leave that neighborhood in its entirety, including Area E in Ward 3. The adoption of these adjustments does reduce the current imbalance, eliminates split neighborhoods, and significantly reduces neighborhood carve-outs while reducing ward boundaries on more prominent thoroughfares, while placing ward boundaries on more predominant, prominent thoroughfares. Sorry, I can't read my own writing. The next slide is the resulting boundary map with all the adjustments applied. Again, what you see now is the proposed adjusted ward boundary map. And subject to your questions or further directions, staff recommends approval of Ordinance 8421 at council's next meeting on December 6.
Great. Thank you, Homer. I want to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
Just a quick question. Great job. I think this is a nice balance. Could you go back to the, we had the A through, maybe I'm missing it. Area F. Oh, where is that on the map? Is it hiding? I can't see it. I know it's not very much. I'm just trying to get a clear...
It's just to the east of the river, south of 270.
Okay, I got you there. All right.
It's that thin sliver.
I looked for it all day long. I never saw it. So I wouldn't do well at Where's Waldo, would I? Okay, thank you. I think this is a great balance. Appreciate the work on it.
Other comments?
Homer, I appreciate it. And if you could put the picture of the, what we're voting on this evening up. I really appreciate the cleanliness of the map, is that it, you know, with all of the talk about voting districts and things, I appreciate that, all the attempts to make it very, as very clean and clear as possible. So thanks for all of your hard work on that.
You're very welcome.
We will look forward to Second Reading Public Hearing on December the 6. Ordinance 85-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement purchase and sale agreement and four easement agreements with AEP Ohio Transmission Company, Inc., as part of the Amlin-Dublin 138-kV transmission line project.
Thank you. And our staff report will be Mr. Hammersmith. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, members of council. The Amlin-Dublin 138-kV transmission line project will be constructed by AEP Ohio Transmission Company, Inc., and involves then building approximately 3.4 miles of single-circuit 138-kV electric transmission line between the existing Amlin substation and the existing Dublin substation, as depicted on the location map on the screen. The project is located partially in the City of Dublin and partially within the unincorporated area of Washington Township. Dublin staff has ensured the AEP Ohio plans are holding true to the route, pole type, and pole heights approved by city council on January 21, 2020. On May 26, 2020, AEP Ohio filed a letter of notification and application with the Ohio Power Siding Board for this new single-circuit 138-kV power line to be placed within an approximately 80-foot-wide permanent easement. For the past year or so, the design of the transmission line has been underway. AEP Ohio anticipates beginning construction of the project in early 2022, and presently has a proposed in-service date of May 2022. The project requires the acquisition of property interests from the City of Dublin. After engaging in amicable discussions, the city has agreed to sell the property interest to AEP Ohio necessary to construct and maintain the project. As part of these discussions, the city retained its own independent appraiser to value the necessary easements, and AEP Ohio has agreed to pay the amount established by the city's appraiser. AEP Ohio is acquiring from the city only the property interest necessary for the purposes of the project. All right, man, I'm going to pull up that. Of temporary easement from four separate city parcels for a total compensation amount to the City of Dublin of $1,343,146. In accordance with the language in each of the four easements, the easements and the rights granted are exclusively for AEP Ohio and its contractors. No other entity, individual, user, or joint user, such as telecommunications companies, are permitted in the easement area without separate, expressed written consent from the city. Additionally, the city reserves the right to construct light poles, streetlights, shared-use paths, sidewalks, and roads within the easement area. This ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute the easement purchase and sale agreement and all necessary conveyance documentation for AEP Ohio to formally acquire the previously described property interest. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the Second Reading and Public Hearing on December 6, 2021. I'd be glad to answer any questions from council.
Great. Thank you, Paul. I want to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
I have a couple of questions for you, Paul. It was interesting to see that you didn't allow, like, piggybacking of lines. So you would have to have permission in order to have anybody else use the easement. So, you know, thinking about, you know, the new cell towers, the 5G towers, that sort of thing. Is there opportunity within these easements to gain additional income from being able to let others use the easements for other purposes? I know it, you expressly say that you have to have permission, but does that mean that you put that clause in there because it's a possible income generator in the future?
It was really intended to restrict the telecommunications companies from going aerial on the transmission poles themselves, was the intent of that language. Not to say that working with 5G providers or small cell providers that we couldn't explore that. I think that would also have to meet with AEP's approval to be able to do that with an easement, but that was not our intent with that language.
Yeah, I would just add, normally there would be pole attachment rights for these poles, and that's what we're trying to forbid.
Right. I did understand that. And then looking at that, it's, you know, this piggybacking language where they want to give themselves the opportunity to do that. I wondered, since you left it out, or you prohibited it, whether or not you had particular plans in the future that it would be an opportunity for you to take advantage of more income out of those easements because of it, but not necessarily so.
Okay, other questions, comments? I'm sorry, Dana, were you not finished? Oh, anything else?
I just want to add one other question. And that's because the line does run along University Boulevard quite a ways, and fairly close to it. I noticed that the, the terms said that you can put shrubbery, but you couldn't put trees. But I was wondering whether or not, because they are so high, if they don't interfere with the reasonable use of, or the operation of the poles and the lines, are trees allowed because it is a boulevard?
They are, within certain height restrictions, and we had that conversation with AEP. Their intent is not to be overly restrictive and allow us to do really our customary landscaping within that easement. So in particular, Lot 4, which is the large green area between Shire Rings and University Boulevard, which is yet undeveloped, you know, that was a consideration there, along with the shared-use paths. So they indicated a willingness to work with us. But again, their interest is not having those trees interfere and grow tall enough to be a problem with the transmission lines themselves.
Because they do say no trees.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will look forward to Second Hearing on that.
Thank you.
On December the 6. Thanks, Paul. Ordinance 86-21.
Amendments to Zoning Code Sections 153.045 through 153.048 to establish development requirements and procedures for mixed-use regional four district, MUR 4, within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan.
Thank you. And our staff report will be with Ms. Rouch. Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to be before you tonight to introduce our zoning code amendment for the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, MUR 4. So as council will recall, the Dublin Corporate Area Plan was adopted in September of 2018, and as part of that area plan amendment, there were the creation of four districts within that area plan. And tonight, we are before you with the MUR 4 district, which is the Llewellyn Farms Office District. As council may recall, the, you know, the development goals within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan really look at how to help reposition our legacy office and helping to establish development requirements and area plan rezoning and future guidelines to help create walkable mixed-use environments, to refresh those areas, and provide some viable opportunities for our office areas and how to help support that through these measures. So as part of the implementation of that, we had discussions with council and the Community Development Committee, and broke out the implementation of the overall Dublin Corporate Area Plan into multiple phases. So Phase 1 is this MUR 4 district, which is located in the bottom right-hand side. I have a more detailed map that I'll show here in a moment. But that's largely on the east side of France Road, south of Rings. Phase 2, then, which will follow this, as well as incorporation with the metro visioning efforts, is that MUR 1, which is closer to 270 and 161. And then the future phases will be the MUR 2 and 3, that requires a little more research and discussion about how to move forward. So for MUR 4 specifically, the Dublin Corporate Area Plan really recommends lower-density office uses. Again, that is the character of what is currently existing there, so how to help those uses remain and continue to be viable. Also, adjacency to residential is really important, and the plan recommends building height limitations, increased setbacks, and landscape buffering, which are all incorporated as part of the draft before you. We have previously discussed Site Number 11, and that is a site outlined within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, which is this single undeveloped parcel within MUR 4, owned by Nationwide Realty. And that specifically calls for lower-density office with building height limitations and additional buffering requirements because of its undeveloped nature adjacent to the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association residence. And as part of that, we have had some really significant discussions with Llewellyn Farms Civic Association, as well as NRI, to get to where we are tonight and share our draft amendments. So as I mentioned, there's three components. The first is the zoning code, which is before you in this presentation, and then the following ordinance is an area of rezoning, to then allow for the implementation of the code, should council approve that. And then the guidelines will follow shortly after, which are, again, the more subjective and aesthetic requirements that sort of reinforce the code. So this is how, as I mentioned, a really robust review process. We've been to Planning and Zoning Commission multiple times over the last six months with council, or excuse me, Planning Commission's latest meeting on the 4th, a recommendation to council with the draft before you. to council with the draft before you within the hopes of being here tonight, and then December the 6th. As I mentioned, we've had some really great ongoing discussions and engagement with the residents and with NRI, and really appreciative of everyone's work moving forward to get to the draft that's before you this evening. So the zoning code amendments, I'll just briefly outline what's included within the code and then be able to obviously answer any specific questions that you have. We've broken that down into four sections for this particular section of the code, so this will be a new section within the code. So we include the purpose and intent, which is really looking at that language that helps incorporate and implement the goals as outlined in the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. Then the next section is uses, so specifically talking about what's permitted, what's conditional, any use-specific standards related to that, wanting to make sure that those are compatible with surrounding development and how to ensure that those uses are appropriately located and sized as well. We did have at the Planning Commission some significant discussion related to existing uses and how to ensure that those uses in existence now remain conforming, so we have added some additional language in there to ensure that that is the case, but also then ensuring that once uses change, that they are in compliance with what the new code proposes. Again, to be, ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. And then in terms of the next section, which is site development standards, that's all your general standards, so lot size, coverage, building width, building height, setback, parking, and then all the architectural, landscape, parking, circulation signs, and lighting. We've had, as I mentioned, significant discussions related to building height, building setback, buffering. Those were the main focuses of our conversations between the residents and the commercial property owners and how to strike a balance of making sure that properties are developable but being sensitive to the residents and have come up with a solution that's agreeable to both groups in terms of minimum setbacks, maximum building heights, and ratio to get from one to the other to allow increased buffering and landscaping and building location as well, so that we can cite these buildings appropriately, particularly when they're adjacent to residential. And then the last section is the review and approval process, which, again, you'll see many similar application types to what we have elsewhere in the city with the majority of the reviews coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then concept plans with development agreements, those would come to council, which is consistent with our most recent updates, given the public dollars that are typically associated with As mentioned, then, this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission November the 4th, and we had significant discussion and may had made changes for Planning Commission's review related to all these topics, which the commission was supportive of and is incorporated in the draft before you. I have highlighted the last item on here, and we highlighted that in your memo related to mechanical screening. This was something that was raised as part of this last discussion on the 4th, and then previously by the residents related to mechanicals that are located on the roof. So the Dublin Corporate Area Plan that's before you this evening includes a provision that mechanical screening would be incorporated in the overall building height, which is different than what is located elsewhere within the code in that your screening would be considered separate of your building height. This provision was deliberated on by the Planning Commission significantly. The resident concern related to this and the request to include that was wanting to make sure the building heights are not artificially increased by allowing screening for mechanicals. The commercial property owner has raised concerns about this then effectively though reducing the overall building height that was agreed upon as part of our discussions. So we have included this item for council's consideration and discussion and whether that should be allowing the screening height to be considered separate of the overall building height and thus making it consistent citywide. So we have that for council's discussion this evening. And as I mentioned, Planning Commission recommended approval with the amendment that's in front of you and requesting council's feedback on that item prior to this moving forward to the second reading in December. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion?
I have a question. Isn't the old, doesn't the code specify that all mechanicals have to be screened in our commercial buildings?
Yes, they do. So it's not that they don't have to be screened, it's how that's measured related to the building height specifically.
Yeah, right.
I didn't want to interrupt you, John, were you still talking? I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I agree. I think the height of this building should not be affected by the screen. I think, put the screen on top of it, you're hiding utilities, and I think that's going to be more than adequate. But I think to penalize the builder for reducing the height of the building over a mechanical screen is probably not the right thing to do.
The conversation at Planning and Zoning was this probably among, I can't remember how many other opportunities for community involvement, engagement. The HOA spent hours and hours and hours negotiating building height, and there is opportunity for a pitched roof on this particular building. There are many opportunities to hide the screening within the height that was agreed upon. The question became that once the height was agreed upon, then there was this question of can you then put mechanicals on top, more screening, and then the height was raised. And in this particular situation, abutting residential with all the negotiation and agreements, Planning and Zoning felt that to allow the height to be raised simply because of mechanicals was not a fair give at this point after having hours and hours of negotiation on actual height and the language of this. And so because there are, I believe, because there are multiple ways to screen mechanicals without changing the height in fairness to the work of the HOA, that this is a fair condition. And that's where they came to this point.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments from council?
So I'm just trying to get clarity on this, Jenny. So there was lots and lots of discussion, and if building height was agreed upon, right, between the developer and the HOA, right? And what was that building height?
So depending on the setback, the maximum building height that they would be permitted would be, and we broke this up by subareas, so particularly for that NRI parcel, the maximum building height would be able to be 95 feet tall, excuse me, not 95 feet, 32 feet in height at a 95-foot setback. That's the maximum.
And so that was what was agreed upon, right?
Yes.
But now the conversation is, are mechanicals included in that 32 feet? Is that the discussion?
As it's currently drafted, as requested by the neighbors after that agreement, Planning Commission incorporated that as part of the draft that's before you.
This would be the only instance in the city where mechanicals are?
Correct.
Included in that change?
And we did discuss that at Planning Commission and talked to that through as well.
But there would be a way, as I understand it, to protect the mechanicals and still maintain that 32 feet, right? So I guess I don't understand why then this provision would have to be required. So why not just leave it at building height, which is what is consistent across the city, if there's a way to achieve this? That, I guess, is the question that I'm not sure I'm clear on.
I think the concern was, if it was a, you tell me, Jenny, and clarify, if it was a flat-roofed building, it would change from a 32-foot to, say, a 34-foot. And the opportunity to put it under a pitched roof or to put the mechanicals in another place, because there was such discussion about additional foot, that then at the end of all of the negotiations to then say, well, we're going to put mechanicals on top of that, and then it has to be screened, which raised it two more feet, it was like, why didn't we talk about that before? It was, it's been looked over with a fine-tooth comb, trying to understand where the parameters are, and then at the very end, this mechanical came up, and there are other opportunities to put these mechanicals in a place that doesn't vary the height. And I think in fairness to the HOA, varying the height at this point seems unfair.
Jenny, if you included the screening height in this building, you'd almost be guaranteed a flat-roofed building.
There could be a scenario where you had a gabled roof that could potentially have a well in it where you could screen that, because the height of a pitched roof is measured to the midpoint, so you could, there would be an opportunity. So again, it depends on the roof type that they pick and how the building is designed. But again, if you wanted the option of a flat roof, then that would potentially, on the counter side to what Ms. Fox was suggesting, is then you're significantly potentially reducing the height of your building, because if you had to have a six-foot-tall screening and your building can only be 32 feet, well, the height of your building is thus six feet less or four feet or whatever that required screening height would be. So that was the concern that was raised.
And this is a straight, no, this is a PUD parcel?
Currently, it's a standard district parcel, and the D cap would also be a standard district. However, the review process would be for new development, that that would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that would be reviewed as part of.
So the Planning Commission then could dictate where the mechanicals would be located on the roof? So if it would not, they could dictate if the mechanicals would not be adjacent to the residential portion of the building, they could be located in some other portion of the building and screened appropriately from that direction?
Yes, there would be a mechanism to do that.
I think it would be fair to give that direction to the Planning Commission so that when this comes through, to locate the mechanicals in an area such that the screening is not necessary to be adjacent to the residential parcels. So the Planning Commission will be able to review those bodies when they review the architecture of the building and the location of the mechanical units themselves. So I guess I would just like to go on record and say, I want the Planning Commission to be sensitive to that when this parcel develops and when it comes through, and that those mechanicals be located in a situation such that screening is not required adjacent to the residential units.
Doesn't screening have to be required from all sides of the building?
It would, but I think maybe to the mayor's point, it could be located towards.
It doesn't need to be on the edge of the building. It could be 20 feet in the building, and essentially you would not see it from the adjacent residential parcel.
Right, I don't think the concern was seeing it. I think the major concern was making sure that the incorporation of mechanicals didn't raise the entire height of the building either by the screening. And we discussed the fact that you could still have the 32-foot height all over, that there might be an area where there might be a recess where the mechanicals are within the roof, you know, design. They just didn't want to see the possibility of it being, I don't know how many feet a mechanical requires in the way of screening, but from anywhere from two to six feet would have been outside the agreement that they had.
I think there's a way to do it, that the residents would never feel it, and that's where I'm at, so that the residents get what they were anticipating and that the developer gets what they were anticipating. And I think it's only better for the residents that the mechanicals be, if it was a foot or two of a building versus an HVAC overhanging my backyard, I would want the HVAC towards the front of the building and have that noise removed from my residential piece anyhow. So that's where I am, and I don't know where other council members fall, but certainly we would like to give some direction prior to second reading on December the 6th.
Chris, I would tend to agree with you. I worry about making, sort of governing this by exception and having this be the only parcel where that rule is different across the city, because over time, it gets lost as to why and what happened. And, you know, when you do something like by exception, then somebody's always going to ask for the exception. That would be a concern for me just from a legislative standpoint and a consistency standpoint. I think Chris's approach is a little bit, it sort of incorporates the best of both worlds. It allows us to keep our rules consistent while removing that sort of view of the mechanicals or the screening of the mechanicals, if you will, and raising that up and sort of giving P&amp;Z that instruction, like, help these people find a better place to put these so that the residents aren't feeling any increased height at all because they can't see it. If you can't see it, you can't perceive it. And so that would be my preferred approach if we can get there that way for those reasons.
Any other comments?
I think it would be beneficial, because I know that there's going to be a lot of questions from residents about this. It might be beneficial to understand exactly how you see this happening and whether or not it would make a difference in the height of that building. Once this zoning is in place, remind me, and I should know this off the bat, will this come necessarily before planning and zoning? Because, so it will see that. I think it would just be good to be able to illustrate.
Sure.
How you're looking at this.
And when they screen those mechanicals, they don't screen the entire roof, they only screen the mechanical portion, so it would hold that back from the roof.
And that was the concern about not knowing where it's going to be and what it would do to the effect of it. And I believe the residents want to be fair, they just did not want to see a loophole where that building just rose up two to four more feet, because the negotiations were fair and lengthy.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Well, we will look forward to second hearing, and if you could just put together some brief schematics of the possible locations for those units and what that might look like from the adjacent parcels, that would be fantastic.
Great.
Thanks, Jenny. We're actually, we're going to stick with you for ordinance 87-12, 21.
A rezoning of 27 parcels from community commercial.
Hey, thanks, guys, have a great evening. Good to have you.
District, suburban office and institutional district and planned unit development to mixed-use regional district 4, MUR 4.
Okay, and we'll stick with Jenny for the staff report.
So as mentioned in the introduction, this is then the subsequent area rezoning that accompanies the code, which incorporates 27 parcels, which have a variety of current zoning, which range from community commercial, suburban office, and planned unit development. So the request before you would be to then rezone these properties to MUR 4, which would allow for the implementation of the code when that ordinance is approved by council. There was not discussion other than support for the proposal by the Planning and Zoning Commission as it's recommended to you this evening and then on the 6th of December, so.
Great, thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? No, great, well, we will look forward to the second hearing on December the 6th. Okay, ordinance 88-21.
To establish appropriations based on the 2022 operating budget of the city of Dublin, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022.
Thank you, and we'll go back with Mr. Stifler, Matt.
Good evening, council. This ordinance establishes the appropriations that were approved as part of the first year of the five-year CIP and the 2022 operating budget. Staff recommends approval at the next hearing on December 6th.
Great, thank you. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Great, we'll look forward to hearing more on December the 6th. Ordinance 89-21.
Mending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021.
Thank you, and Ms. Hoagletree is our staff report this evening, welcome, Rosa.
Good evening, council. This ordinance amends the annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31, 2021 to provide supplemental funding in certain accounts for Q4. All details related to this ordinance are included in the memo. Finance staff have been working with department division directors to ensure sufficient budget is available to fulfill normal operations. If additional needs are identified prior to December 6, this ordinance will be revised and council will be notified. With that, staff recommends approval of this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion?
I just had one quick question. So on the schedule that was provided in the general fund, we had an ending cash balance of $40 million.1. That's a little different than the ending cash balance we were talking about earlier this evening. Could you please explain the difference in that? I'm looking at Matt, maybe. He put that first number up, right? We'll let him do it.
I mentioned that to him before the meeting.
This was the one area that I was supposed to answer that question, so congratulations.
That is based on the revised budget. The revised budget numbers currently have expenditures outpacing revenues by about 35. outpacing revenues by about $35 million, soon to be $40 million with the appropriation for the Shepherd property approved earlier. Our current general fund variance is negative $2.7 million. So we're nowhere near that $40 million variance. I don't expect us to get anywhere near that variance. That's a result of a number of factors, none of which are coming to pass. So I don't expect that that number is actually very helpful, but that is what it represents. A lot of it is the $2 million for recreation transfer that's not needed, that took it from four to six, the extra transfer to the pool that's not needed, that took it from 475 to 675. It's those types of expenditures that were approved for actions that did not occur. The impact of COVID has not been that extreme, and, you know, haven't needed those transfers. So I'm not expecting our general fund balance to be anywhere near that $40 million figure.
So one was... This one doesn't reflect those estimate changes, so...
It does not. It's based purely on revised budget, which is the most conservative legally-permissible number, and we're nowhere near that.
Thank you. Others? Rosa, we understand this is your last meeting with us, and we hope that the City of Powell understands the treasure that they're getting in you, and we wish you nothing but the best in being our future neighbor.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good. Okay, ordinance 90-21.
Amending Section 31.07 campaign contribution limits and amending Section 31.08 campaign finance disclosure of the codified ordinances of the City of Dublin, Ohio to update the campaign contribution and finance disclosure regulations.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Ms. Riddler for our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Dublin created its own set of regulations related to campaign finance for city council candidates. The code limits the amount of campaign contributions that an individual running for council can receive. The code indicates that no candidate for award council seat can receive a contribution of more than $150. No candidate for an at-large council seat can receive more than $250. These amounts have not been updated for 12 years. The code indicates that council may consider basing any increase on the Consumer Price Index. The draft ordinance before you this evening would update the campaign contribution limits for award council candidate to $185, which is a $35 increase, and the limits for an at-large council candidate to $310, which is a $60 increase. The new numbers reflect the average of the Consumer Price Index since the last amendment, rounded to the nearest $5. Under the draft ordinance, contribution limits will be automatically adjusted to reflect the CPI every four years by the clerk of council. The code also requires candidates to file campaign finance disclosure statements with the clerk of council. The current version requires three filings, which are in addition to the filings required with the county when council candidates are running for election. The draft ordinance would amend the dates on which candidates must file disclosure statements. The first Dublin pre-election disclosure is eliminated in the draft, and the new dates align with two of the dates on which candidates must file statements with the county board of elections. So we'll have the pre-election filing date, which is 12 days before the election, and then the post-election filing date, which is 38 days after the election. It all requires all forms to be filed on the forms provided by the State of Ohio that are submitted to the county board of elections, so there won't be any duplication in filing forms. Staff recommends approval of 90-21 at the December 6 meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
Thank you. I just make a... Thank you, Jennifer, for helping, I think, simplify the process for filing the papers. This keeps us the same level of disclosure, the same level of information. It just aligns us with what has to be done at the county levels. And I think that's just whatever we can do to simplify the process. I think that's great. And I think it's wonderful. I recognize we're one of the few communities that has campaign finance limits, and I think that's a fabulous thing. And I think this is an easy way to sort of keep up with inflation but respect really quite low campaign limits. So I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Appreciate the work on this, Jennifer. We will look forward to second reading on December the 6th. Introduction, public hearing vote resolution, resolution 6721.
Requesting the Delaware, Franklin, and Union County auditors to draw money that may be in the county treasuries and to issue a draft to the Director of Finance of the City of Dublin for any money that may be in the accounts for the City of Dublin.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Matt's work in overtime tonight.
This is a routine ordinance that allows us to have access to our money a couple months sooner than they would otherwise distribute, and we recommend passage.
Thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Am Rosegroom.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 68-21.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the annual retaining wall and decorative wall maintenance program.
Thank you. And Mr. Hammersmith will have our staff report.
Thank you, council. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the annual wall and decorative wall maintenance program. The work for this program is located on Oak Meadow Drive in the Oak Park subdivision. This program is funded from the 2021-2025 capital improvements program, $125,000 for annual retaining wall and decorative wall maintenance. On October 26, 2021, two bids were received and publicly opened through Bid Express by engineering staff for the program. All bids received were higher than the engineer's estimate of $140,000. The additional funds necessary for this work are available from unencumbered funds from other 2021 projects and programs within the CIP. Work is expected to commence in the spring of 2022 and to be completed by May 20th of 2022. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of 2K General Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $148,000 for this program. I will do my best to answer any questions council might have.
Thanks, Paul. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
I have a question, Paul, about the stone veneers and whether or not you have problems throughout the city with delamination of stone veneers. And I ask that from, I guess, a planning and zoning standpoint, because we're looking at materials. And thin brick and stone veneers and replacement of regular stone walls and full thickness brick is... I don't know how old this wall is, but $140,000 on a delamination seems...
It dates back to probably 2005, 2006, when Oak Park was built. Typically, we don't have problems with delamination. It's really the application. And probably in the last 10 to 15 years, we changed our process where we actually require a diamond mesh material that's stainless steel be applied to the surface of the walls, which are typically concrete. So it's fastened to the surface, and then a coat of a bonding agent's placed on the wall, and then, you know, the veneer is placed after that. Past practice was it was just an acid wash on the concrete surface itself, and then the application occurs. So this actually provides a physical attachment to the wall itself. The unfortunate part in this particular case is the concrete nails that were used to install the mesh were only about 3/4 of an inch long, and were not long enough to adhere to the concrete itself. So it was actually quite that simple.
Can I ask you the price variation between actually building a true stone wall and then the concrete? Is there a real difference? Because, I mean...
It's rather a significant difference, because you have to actually, on that wall, create a rock ledge or a place for that real stone to bear. And it all has to be really hand-shaped to provide, you know, for that consistent look. The veneer is actually much easier to apply. I don't have an exact number for you, but it is a much more involved process with real stone.
And is the stone veneer that they put on actual stone or is it a cement?
It's a synthetic material made out of cement.
Have you noticed any fading?
Not necessarily. I wouldn't say on our applications, and we've consistently used the same product over the years, probably the last 20 years. It's been the same product, and we've really had good luck. I think the product from 20 years ago looks just as good as what's put on today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is over a bridge. This really doesn't have a true pedestrian experience as much as up close and personal.
Right.
And the adhesives have come a long way since this product, since these products were installed.
That's true.
Any other discussion points? Okay, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Am Rosegroom.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Resolution 6921.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with United Steel Workers of America regarding wages, hours, and conditions of employment for employees within the maintenance worker, fleet technician one, electrical worker, and custodial worker bargaining unit.
Thank you. And our staff report will be from Ms. McLeary. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. Resolution 6921 authorizes the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the United Steel Workers of America, also known as the USW, regarding wages and insurance for employees within the classifications of maintenance worker, fleet technician one, electric worker, and custodial worker bargaining unit. The term of this agreement has been tentatively agreed to for Articles 22, which is wages, and Article 32, which is insurance, only, and it expires December 31, 2022. Staff recommends that council approve resolution 6921, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Am Rosegroom.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 71-21. Waiving competitive bidding and declaring sole source and authorizing the city manager to execute a design and construction agreement with structural erectors to reconstruct a historic two-story cabin.
Thank you. We will welcome Mr. Ehrman as our staff report this evening.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you, Mayor. Staff is seeking your approval for waiving the competitive bidding process for this project and declaring a sole source. The project includes the reconstruction of the two-story cabin that was discovered in the walls of the home on Riverside Drive a few years back for a total amount of $400,000. You'll recall, back in the August 16 meeting, city council voted for the cabin to be reconstructed at the Dublin Arts Council site location, as illustrated on the slide here. This project has been approved for a $400,000 reimbursable grant from the State of Ohio and will initially be funded by the city with funds that have been allocated in the capital budget. The justification for waiving the competitive bidding and declaring sole source for this project is as follows. Structural erectors was the contractor responsible for the disassembling of the cabin from the walls of the residence of the home. Upon disassembly, structural erectors inventoried and stored the components of that cabin in such a way that it can ensure reassembly is accurate. Structural erectors has detailed knowledge of how the structure will be reassembled, as certain sections will need to be repaired and/or refabricated to replicate the original components. Structural erectors also understands the significant nuances of the building while it was still intact, to which no other contractor has had access. So with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance... This ordinance waiving the competitive bidding and declaring sole source for these reasons and authorize the city manager to execute the design and construction agreement with structural erectors in the amount of $400,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Matt. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Very good. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Am Rosegroom.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 72-21.
Establishing a community inclusion advisory committee.
Thank you, and we'll go back to Mr. McDaniel for our staff report.
Thank you again. City council established both the community task force and the chief's advisory committee, as you well know. The community task force with input from the chief's advisory committee provided a diversity, equity, inclusion framework with certain priority areas identified to city council for its consideration. The DEI framework provides a well-thought-out guideline and/or work plan for future efforts. City council agrees with the community task force that more work is needed and that this effort should be ongoing. The city council asked the staff to take a look at establishing an advisory committee in accordance with DEI framework priority area one general recommendations. So we brought back to you this proposed resolution for your consideration. Resolution 7221 establishes that advisory committee is the community inclusion advisory committee. Its powers and duties, initial priorities, members, terms, vacancies, staff, and liaison support, chair, vice chair responsibilities, reporting requirements, meetings, compensation, attendance, policy, and required training are all included in the resolution. The resolution also directs the city manager to identify and recommend 11 Dublin residents for consideration by city council for initial appointment by separate resolution no later than February 28th of 2022. Staff recommends passing resolution 7221, subject to any changes council may desire. And before we leap into your conversation about that, I have a change that I would propose, because I had caught this based on a conversation the other day. Under the section of terms in the resolution, I would just suggest that it be changed to read, in the very first sentence, "Members shall serve in staggered terms of two years," to set up the fact that we were establishing two-year terms, but then the first terms, in order to get staggered, so many will serve one year, and then so many will serve two years, and that'll get you into the staggered rotation. So left that part out. Other than that, happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion?
Dana, I appreciate very much your work on this, and I appreciate, again, the DEI task force and all of their work on this. It was a lot. And as I go through the list of items, I think, once upon a time, I counted, I think there was 137 make-note of recommendations and activities, and that's a lot. So it says there's substantial work that we need to do together and substantial of opportunity to do together. And I appreciate the ability for the group to come together and to discuss what items we work on as a group and how we advance those. So I appreciate that very much. I also appreciate the 11-member makeup of it, because this will allow us... That would make it one of our biggest advisory groups, really, in the city. And I think that would give us the opportunity to really get a wide spectrum of perspectives, which is the intent of this. So I appreciate, again, the flexibility in the approach and the composition of it, and I thank you for your work on that, Dana.
Dana, there was some discussion on here about attendance. And did we have the opportunity to make sure that this was in alignment with all of our other boards and commissions' attendance policies? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Kathy?
Dana, I appreciate very much your work on this and I appreciate, again, the DEI task force and all of their work on this. It was a lot. And as I go through the list of items, I think, once upon a time I counted, I think there was 137 make note of recommendations and activities. And that's a lot. So it says there's substantial work that we need to do together and substantial of opportunity to do together. And I appreciate the ability for the group to come together and to discuss what items we work on as a group and, and how we advance those. So I appreciate that very much. I also appreciate the, the 11-member makeup of it because this is, this will allow us, that would make it one of our biggest advisory groups really in, in the, in the city. And I think that would give us the opportunity to really get a wide spectrum of perspectives, which is the intent of this. So I appreciate, again, the flexibility in the approach and the composition of it. And I thank you for your work on that, Dana.
Dana, there was some discussion on here about attendance. And did we have the opportunity to make sure that this was in alignment with all of our other boards and commissions' attendance policies?
Jenny provided the, the attendance policies that you currently have on the books and they are, as I understand it, currently exist for two, one for the Community Service Advisory Commission and one for Planning and Zoning Commission. Those are not necessarily consistent with each other. One, I'll just tell you what the CSAC one is. Attendance is a responsibility of each member of the commission and is encouraged for all members. Record of each member's attendance is kept and such record is used by city council when considering reappointment to the commission or appointment to another board or commission. Each member is responsible for notifying the secretary as soon as possible before any commission meeting if unable to attend. P&amp;Z has a little bit different twist to it. More than four unexcused absences with one year may result in a member's removal from the commission by city council. Each member shall be responsible for notifying the chair and director or designee as soon as possible before any commission meeting if unable to attend. What I, what I had written in was, was something that, along the lines of if someone could not serve for whatever reason, then we would go back to an appointment process as originally setting this up. Or I would consult with the mayor or council can remove them, but I would consult with the mayor. Because obviously, when someone stops showing up, there's, there's always a good reason for that and they just can't continue. So really turns into a vacancy is what it turns into. So it's not like it's a disciplinary thing for volunteers because we're just thankful people will come and, come and help us with these things. So usually it turns out it's an amenable situation where someone's, you know, not able to make it. So the idea there is to just go back to the loop of, of reappointing. Now, once, once these initial terms are over with and people are vacating at the end of their term, then you'll go back through the normal appointment process that you currently have for all your boards and commissions committee members.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a, I have a question, but I, but I think it's being answered here in the, the priorities of the, I'm sorry, my computer just shut down there for a minute, so I have to bring it back up. And the powers and duties, which, which I like the way it's worded. The advisory committee shall act in an advisory capacity to city council and the city manager's and its duty shall include advising the city on diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies and strengthen connections among diverse community groups and city government. And, and I appreciate and understand, and I guess I'd like you to comment on it, that this really acts as a more wide open opportunity for suggestions from the group. Even though the framework gives a framework, it, the powers and duties are actually primarily in an advisory capacity. Is that correct? Is that how we should read this?
There, that's, that's correct. And typically, it wouldn't even be to the city manager, but in this case, they have the one priority that we're really relying on them as a sounding board relative to our internal DEI strategy. And it's been very effective so far and we really appreciate the feedback that we've gotten so far from the task force and the chief's advisory committee on our internal endeavors relative to, to our own DEI strategy.
Okay. And then by pointing out the frameworks, priority areas, what we're then doing is then we're starting to incorporate some of the, some of the suggestions, some of the framework opportunities, I guess, for the advisory commission committee to work on. So I see it as kind of twofold here. I see this as one, that they're primarily in advisory and they're, secondly, having the opportunity to begin to look at the framework and to bring back some options for council to consider. Is that a fair?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay.
Dana, what, what intervals would you expect check-ins to be back with city council?
I thought I had written in here, maybe I didn't, but the intent would be at least no less than, I think, was it semi-annual? And that would, that's typically the case because like in the, in the case of community service advisory committee, you're referring things to them and then they're reporting back. In this case, they've got a work plan they're working on and they would, once a year, minimally once a year. But I would frankly see it probably a little bit more, more often than that, especially in the first year or two.
And I would think maybe as it starts to get off the ground, we might hear more so that we're, make sure that we're on the same page of the work that we're looking to have done versus, is consistent with the work that they're doing. You know, so we don't get 10 months in work into a project and come back and say, well, that really wasn't the question we were asking. We were asking you X and, and you were solving Y. So...
Yeah, really, I think it's incumbent upon staff that's, that's staffing them to, to really monitor that situation and to, to give advice on if they should be checking back in with council before, you know, anything goes too far down a certain road of, and that's true with any advisory committee on any topic. So, yeah, I think staff would probably provide good counsel on that.
Yeah, I know when, when we give a project a CSAC, normally there, there's a check-in and this is where we're working and then there's their report, their final findings come back.
Correct.
So I just wanted to, I thought maybe a year might be a little long to go before we, we huddle up and make sure that we're, we're all playing the same game.
Sure. I mean, you could certainly increase that in the first year and then maybe not so much the, the next year, however, however you feel most comfortable.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Am Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you working on that. I know it's a, it's herding cats a little bit, so appreciate that. Okay, other business. We have an update to our HR policy in the code ordinances, chapter 33. And Jennifer Maglietti will have our staff report.
Good evening again. Subsection 33.07 of chapter 33, which is the human resources policy of the city code of ordinances, provides the process by which the chapter is amended. It calls for the amendments to be reported to council and unless council amends or disapproves such amendments or they are contrary to the city charter, the amendment shall go into effect 30 days after such report. Subject to any questions council may have, we recommend that the amendments articulated in the report be allowed to go into effect within 30 days.
Very good, thank you. Council questions, discussion? All right. Appreciate it. Staff comments, general?
Just a quick couple of comments. Just want to make sure you're aware that there's a public meeting for December 4th, December 1st, and this is for a discussion with residents in immediate area of South Franklin Street. And this is in regards to the proposed South Franklin Street improvements. That'll be held in council chambers at 5:00 PM. I know council member Fox was particularly interested in that a while back and want to make sure everyone is aware. It should be on your calendars if you want to, want to be available for that. The only other thing is I too, just, I want to thank Rosa for the great work that she's done for the city and how fortunate we've been to have her. And we hate losing our people to other cities, but you know what? She gets to go be a finance director, so we're awfully proud of her. And if she doesn't like it, we're not far away and can always try to come back. So, but thank you for all your great work, Rosa. Appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you.
That's all I have.
Council would echo those thoughts as well. Okay, committee reports. Admin committee. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to give a, maybe a status report on a couple of things. I think it's just good timing with our, our work here and our establishment of our DEI task force that one of the recommendations in there was the training and update for council and all boards and commission members to go through DEI training. And I'm just happy to report, we, we have just a couple of timing issues, but 95% of all our boards and commission members have completed that and all of our council members have completed that. So wonderful and we're, we're just working on a couple of schedules for the rest. So thank you and, and all very good reports. Thank you to Homer and team for helping us put that together. And then the second thing is we finished our council retreat this year with several items. And I'm, I'm happy to say I went through the list of the items that we agreed to with the adoption of our ordinances and our resolutions. We have, we have really completed our checklist from our council retreat on the administrative items. So I want to appreciate everybody, thank everybody for their work on that. Thanks staff for their work on that. And we're in good shape going into 2021. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Community development committee, Mr. Reiner?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Finance committee, Ms. Aludo?
Nothing, Ms. Ty.
Public services, Ms. Fox?
We had a really interesting conversation on November 10th at public services. We, we received a, an update on the shared micro-mobility. That was the agenda item that I told you y'all needed to tune into. The Franz Road shared mobility study was presented to us, 256 pages. But in a small condensed version, I will tell you that J.M. Rayburn and Jeanne Willis gave us some really interesting options on the possibility of utilizing our shared use path versus restructuring Franz Road. So for a pilot program, at the present time, it's been recommended that we utilize the shared use path in a pilot project that would be able to use electric vehicles, scooters, COGO bikes, that sort of thing, which we'll, we'll begin next, next year, I think it was May, May, for a year to see how that worked out. The, the response from the committee was that the boundaries probably were not large enough. It really just encompassed the historic district and Bridge Park and a little piece of Franz Road. And if we're really going to see how micro-mobility might be utilized in the city, we suggested that they go back and maybe take a look at widening the boundaries. So the staff is going to report to the committee their further information on micro-mobility program in the way of boundaries, phasing in, the width of the sidewalk, the number of vehicles and, and get back with us. Committee also requested some information on the code of bus ridership data because this micro-mobility incorporated some bus stops. And the conversation was, let's see how much ridership there is and incorporate that information with this pilot program. And they will come back to us about the Dublin Recreation Center's mobility hub design in January. The other updates we, we had were from engineering and community events and that would be the end of that.
Great, thank you. Okay, liaison reports. We'll stay right there. Ms. Fox?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you just said.
Liaison reports?
Liaison, yes. The only one that I'm, would like to mention to you tonight is that tomorrow evening, Washington Township, our Denise King, our trustee, will be celebrating her retirement from over 30 years of government service. So tomorrow evening at the Dublin Golf Club of Dublin, we will be celebrating her. She, and I want to say this publicly, she has been such a strong proponent of providing equipment, training, and resources to the firefighters of Washington Township. And she's been a lifelong proponent of the environment here in Dublin, its preservation, its sustainability, and the recycling programs that she has initiated and the recreational enjoyment of the parks and bike paths and waterways while she's been a council member. I really think that we as a city would like to thank Denise, a longtime resident of Dublin. Her dedication, her commitment, and her effort given to this community and, and to the township has been exemplary and we appreciate her. So Denise, thank you.
All of those things are true. Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
I have no updates, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler?
Attended the Logan Union Champagne annual meeting last week and there seems to be, there's a rumor afoot that Jerome Township is interested in slowing the growth up in their neck of the woods, which I think is good news for all of us based on the conversations we've been having about the school districts and the overlap there. So I'll keep you posted.
That certainly is good news. Thank you, Mr. Keeler. Mr. Reiner?
Please.
Liaison reports? Arts council, veterans committee?
The finalists for the ML Red Treview Nature Reserve public artwork will be visiting us on November 19th. The artists are from the following cities, Long Island, New York, Portland, Oregon, and Brooklyn, New York. This is a group of highly talented artists with a great list of public commissions, anywhere from five to 12 each. So we're all looking for this, the winner of this aesthetic contest. Should be interesting to see what they come up with because they're very varied in their skill. Some are metal, some use more landforms, so it's going to be an interesting endeavor nonetheless. The, on behalf of the veterans, I wish, wish to thank you for attending the Veterans Day ceremony on 11/11. It was a beautiful day with well attended. And many thanks to Colonel Jeff Noble who organized this event and to the Dublin City Schools and their bands and the city of Dublin staff. So thank you for coming out. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Nothing.
Okay. We did have a Morpsy meeting on the 10th. Don't have a whole lot to report from that other than the Link Us program and the inclusion of Dublin now and the update on that Link Us study is going to be significant for us and where we are in the region. With that, we'll go to roundtable. Mr. Keeler? Jane? Greg? Christina? John? Kathy?
Thank you.